Good afternoon, everyone. I have 2:00 in my time zone. I assume that we're saying good evening to some and good morning to others. Thank you all for joining for today's webinar session, Minding the Gap: Social Justice and Developmentally Appropriate Practice. This is part of a series that Highscope is sponsoring with its Board of Directors. Came to mind through discussions with a former Highscope Research Director, Yoma Uruka, who is an author of a very important book and discussions over time. We realized that with the authors, we wanted to commit with Highscope and the Highscope community across the country to making sure that we do not look away from the important work of embracing anti-bias in our classrooms. And so we began the series. Those of you, I hope there were many of you that were on our last webinar with the authors, with Tanya, Stephanie, and Yoma. Tanya will be joining us today in a moment. And our particular sessions will take place over time. This is the second. They are always on the third Wednesday, a third Wednesday of each month at 2:00 Eastern and whatever time zone you are joining in from. If you don't mind, I would love for all of you who are in the audience to kind of let us know, either in the chat room, where you are zooming in from, so we can see where our locations are throughout the country. Just as a reminder, again, every Wednesday at 2:00 Eastern, we will continue this brave discussion together. We will be diving into the book, Don't Look Away, from the vantage point at our next month in December. We'll be tuning in on what anti-bias classrooms look like and how good practice engages children who are dual-language learners. We will dive in on other topics on the following month's Wednesdays. So we'll be discussing family engagement, assessment, and the ever-important workforce. Then again, in April, we'll be rejoining each other with all of the authors, hopefully, to discuss about this journey that we've been on together. So with that, we'll move on to our next slide. And I'll introduce our speakers today. Again, there's a picture of Don't Look Away embracing anti-bias classrooms. I've had the book by my side for a number of months now and have taken a thumb through the pages many times and find something new every time I'm there. At our last meeting with Tanya, Yoma, and Stephanie, I think one thing that we definitely learned is that this is a joint venture. We're in this together. And that was very clear with our authors, that they are a sisterhood that are kind of marching across the map with this important work. And they're both intellectual sisters, but kind of committed sisters as well. And so I know we're all looking forward to hearing from Tanya Durden today. She is the author that's joining us from Georgia State University. I'm proud to say my daughter is living in Georgia as well, and I hope has gained some insights from these book studies. We'll also be joined by Oscar Barberin, who is a Highscope Board Member and brings long engagement in early childhood and work with Black boys, which we'll hear about in just a few minutes. He's coming to us, I believe, from Florida, but Oscar, you can confirm that. He also has vast experience in North Carolina, at the University of Maryland, as well as at the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor. And my friend and fellow Board Member, Sue Brede Camp, I'm very excited that you all are going to get some words and wisdom from Sue today. She has been a longtime member of the Board of Highscope in addition to the work that many of you know she's been engaged in through the years on developmentally appropriate practice. I can't think of anyone better who could talk to us about that, except for maybe Kenneth, who is going to be our moderator today. Kenneth Sherman is both a Highscope trainer and is overseeing amazing work that is going on in San Antonio, Texas, where teachers in two early childhood schools are being trained in the Highscope framework and are doing amazing work, which I hope many of you have seen in various web venues at Highscope. And we'll point you to those a little bit later. I'm going to hand off to Kenneth and turn my camera off and am thrilled with the kind of enterprise that we're all going to be engaged in here. Kenneth, take it away.
Thanks, Jenna. Good afternoon, everyone. Hopefully, everyone is having a great day. Tanya, I would like to start with you. I would like to, I would like to know your thoughts on developmentally appropriate practices in the context of Don't Look Away. I was really intrigued to read all of the book. The book is absolutely wonderful, but I would really like for you to speak to developmentally appropriate practices as it relates to the book.
Okay, very good question. Well, in relation to our book, Don't Look Away, one of the things that we do is we really contextualize everything based on culture, race, ethnicity, and language. And so when we think about developmentally appropriate practice, we have to first think about a cultural context, right? Because historically, developmentally appropriate practice has really been based on the theories of very Eurocentric-focused theories. And even the theorists that has come, you know, that has laid the foundation of developmentally appropriate practice have predominantly been white European men. So we have to think about first, what does developmentally appropriate practice look like for young children, particularly young children of color? And so one of the things that we do in this book is we provide first a foundational framework for culturally-relevant anti-bias education. And when we think about culturally-relevant anti-bias education, there's certain principles that have to be followed that sometimes go along with developmentally appropriate practices and sometimes counter developmentally appropriate practice. I'll give you an example. So one of the things particularly that we talk about with culturally-relevant teaching is a standard of excellence. So not a standard of just minimum competencies. What is a two-year-old expected to learn at this age? What is a three-year-old expected to learn at this age? But instead, what is the potential and what is the standard of excellence that we expect as this particular child? So not really having these boundaries that we sometimes put on children with the term "developmentally appropriate practice." So that's the first piece. I'll give you a very concrete example. And we provide these examples, a lot of these types of examples, inside of our book, because we wanted the book to be very much translational. We wanted it to be practitioner-focused, and we want it to be very relatable also to the teacher, to the educational leader, to the policy decision-maker, et cetera. So a practical example, I'll give you a personal example. And our book is filtered with both personal and professional examples. So I have a six-month-old, a four-year-old, and a two-year-old. And so with my two-year-old, my husband and I were going back and forth the other night because he was talking to his really good buddy, who has also a two-year-old. And his buddy was bragging, "Oh, my child knows his ABCs." And so my husband pulls over our toddler, and we know that on-demand assessment is not the right, you know, developmentally-appropriate thing to do. So he pulls over my toddler and says, "Say your ABCs." And he's like, "A, B, C, L, Q, R, S, T, N, P." And so my husband is looking at me like, "Wait a minute. Why can't he say his ABCs?" And so we're having this really interesting conversation about, well, that, well, when we think about what our expectations are for our son, for this little black boy, let me tell you what he can do and what we expected him to do. What he can do is he actually has the cognitive processing of really a five-year-old, where he can do four or five multi-step directions that he can follow. Also, he's able to identify his name in environmental print, you know? So do you want him to be able to developmentally appropriate, you know, seeing the alphabet? Or do you want to, for him to instead have a higher order of cognitive thinking processing that he does and that's really connected to his interests, that's connected to his environment, and that's real-life application? So that's kind of one example of really the cultural constructs of what we have traditionally deemed as what's developmentally appropriate for children and how it sometimes clashes with what we should expect young children to do and how we have to situate all learning within their culture, within their language, and within their actual reality as well.
So Tanya, you have just blown my mind. As I, as an educator, for quite a few, for a number of years, I actually, you know, thinking about developmentally appropriate practices, I never thought about putting it into a culturally-relevant framework. And so when you talk about that, and I read it in the book, I was, that was my big aha moments, right? Like, I'm like, okay, it makes sense. So Tanya, the question that I also have is that a lot of teachers don't work in their community, right? They don't work, they don't work, they don't live where they work. And so how can, what can they do in terms of embedding some of the culturally-relevant and anti-bias teaching in their classroom?
Oh, that's a very good question. The definition of cultural competency is knowing your own culture very well and one other culture, okay? And so as educators, one thing that we do really well is we study very well, and we learn about all types of different. We learn about inquiry-based learning. We learn about creative writing. We learn about developmentally appropriate practice. We enjoyed learning. That's our motto, lifelong learners. And so what we have to first start with, and this will be probably an interesting response to your question, but we first have to start with our own self and our own culture and our own way of beings. So first, in order to be culturally competent and to really, truly know the culture, the community, and the children and the families that you serve, you have to also first know yourself, your own culture. Because cultural competency is knowing yourself, your own culture very well, and then one other culture as well. So with that, I have to know who I am, and I have to know what I bring to the table, what biases I bring, what prejudices I bring, what triggers I have as well when I'm engaging with otherness. And that's confounded when I'm going into a community and teaching the children and the families in that community. Because when I come into a community, I'm coming into a newness. But if I'm not aware of what my own biases, my own culture, my own way of beings is, then I'm seeing this community, this family, this child through my own lens instead of seeing it through their lens. One of the things that I tell the teacher candidates that I work with and also the teachers I work with is, if you are not learning from the children, families, and communities that you work with, you're not teaching. Not sure what you're doing, but you're not teaching. You have to be learning, an astute learner of the community in which you're working in. One of the things we also stress in this book is if you are afraid of the children, the families, and the communities in which you are working, you do not need to be working and teaching in that community. You are doing harm. Our motto in early childhood is do no harm. You are doing harm, because children, families, communities feel that fear. They feel that overprotectness that we sometimes bring into communities where we're unsure or uncomfortable of how to really connect and to relate. So that's the first thing, know thyself. And once you know thyself, you then learn from the children, the families, and the community. Because everything is within a cultural context, everything. You know, when we're talking about whatever we're teaching, when we're talking about the fall, when we're talking about all about me, when we're talking about fools, all of these themes that we do in early childhood. How can we teach them if we're teaching them in a bubble? If we're not bringing in community helpers? How can you do a unit on community helpers if you don't bring in members from the community? I don't have, for example, I would not particularly have maybe a grocery store clerk right around the corner from me, because I may be in a food desert, all right? Or I may actually have a grocery store clerk that is right around the corner from me. So you have to think really within this cultural context of who are the individuals that make up the community of the children in which I teach? And so before you can truly teach within the cultural context, know yourself, learn from the children, learn from the families, learn from the community. And then you could be able to authentically bring in what children see every day and what they learn and what they experience every day. This pandemic has been a true blessing for me because I am teaching my children, and this is the work I do, right? We write books about, about culturally-relevant. And boy, do I have so many examples now of how to make learning so culturally-relevant, because everything we do, I've had to, like none other, I've had uninterrupted time of really studying my children, like a PGA, studying my children to see how they are as learners and really having to be, use my culturally-relevant lens of how can I make this meaningful for them? And they show us all the time of how learning can be meaningful to them, because they bring their own lens to the table. We just have to listen to children.
Wow, so inspiring, know thyself. I love it. I absolutely love it. So thinking about this work, Tanya, this is hard work, right? We all know that this is hard work. I am in San Antonio, and one of the things that we are doing here in San Antonio is my school, two schools, have formed a committee called the RISE Committee, which the acronym stands for recognizing implicit biases and seeking to evolve. And so it's about thinking about those implicit biases. And the teachers are the ones who have decided to undertake this. But I noticed, and they've come to me, and they said, Kenneth, we're having, we're having trouble. We're having trouble to really start the group and start that momentum and starting that dialogue. And right now, it's just like everybody is talking and everybody's saying things, and everybody's putting their feelings out there, and we're not progressing. What can we as administrators in supporting this work? How can we, how can we support those who are on the front lines, who really are undertaking this work and support them? What would be your suggestions? Hold on, Tanya.
Sorry, I was talking. I'm sorry. Your question is for those on the front lines to address their biases and their isms?
So how can a program administrators help with this work, right? How can we, how can we get the dialogue started about addressing and tackling some of these bigger issues, such as implicit bias and being culturally-sensitive? All of those things that we want our teachers to be? What can we do as program administrators?
Okay.
To support that work?
So the first thing is to not start there, all right? So that is the first recommendation. The first recommendation is to look in your own backyard. So as leaders, as administrators, you first need to look at the policies that you have. How are, how is, how are the program policies, the school policies contributing to oppression, contributing to racial inequity, and contributing to a lot of the isms in which we experience? Oh, there's my slide, okay. I'll go through that in a second. And so that's the first thing that you need to, as administrators, is to take first, do almost like a racial equity analysis of your program, of your leadership style, of your own isms that's brought to the table. Because what we find in our work with early childhood programs is we find that it's perpetuating many of the Eurocentric beliefs and ways of being that really does disenfranchise not only children of color, but also the staff of color as well. So I'll give you an example. Well-known, we use often in early childhood, the etters and the etters, all right? One of the things we talk about in the book is we have two different types of perspectives that predominantly many families relate to. So there's the individualistic culture, and there's the collectivist culture. And so many ethically-diverse families are in the collectivist culture. Many European white families are in or follow the individualistic culture. Most of our program quality measures is very individualistic. You know, focused on independent learning, focused on self-help skills, focusing on, you know, your own, you know, self-emotional regulation. All of those are very individualistic. Many of your Black and Brown children are coming from more collectivist perspectives, more collectivist way of thinking, that it is more important to focus on the group dynamics and the group self-support and the cooperative learning than it is on, well, I'm able to do this, but my peer is not able to do this. In our households, for example, again, I'll give you a personal example with my children. It is not enough for Zoe, who's the oldest, to be able to, you know, put her things up. She also is responsible for her brother, for him to be successful and for him to be able to put up his things. So these are two different types of dynamics that are in place that is the responsibility of the administrator and the responsibility of the leaders to enforce. And so how are you being flexible or not to whether it's state mandates or licensing requirements that yet again perpetuate this cycle of isms? So I would start there first. What type of buy-in, what type of courageous, critical conversations and autonomy? Do you allow for the teachers and the staff for them to be able to engage in ethical and critical and courageous conversations? So start there first. What type of environment is it? From the policies that you implement to the opportunities for families to engage, to your discipling, you know, policies? What we know is that there is a high rate of disproportionately of special education referrals, even in early childhood, also suspensions of Black and Brown children. So how, as administrators and leaders, once, you know, and those are usually decisions, ultimate decisions that directors and principals make. So how, again, are you perpetuating, contributing to this system of inequity? So that's the first start, before we even get to the front line of the teachers. It has to first start with these policies that are in place that disenfranchise children, that create inequitable experiences for children, especially Black and Brown children.
Thank you, Tanya. Sue, I would like to hear from you as well. Sue, you are the developmentally appropriate practice and have done a lot of work with NEYC and developmentally appropriate practices. I would also like to hear from you, Sue, as your take on the book and developmentally appropriate practices.
Good to see you, Kenneth, and wonderful to be with Tanya. I think every time she and the authors of this book speak, I learn so much. It's really a privilege to be here with you and to learn from all of you. I think I want to encourage everyone who's watching to read the other things that Tanya and Yoma and Stephanie and Carrie Anne have written, because they have contributed an enormous amount to our knowledge base. The research that they are doing is critically important to drive our practice. And I really hope that people will seek that out and learn from it as well as I have done. And at the same time, they have day jobs and they're parenting young children, as Tanya said. So it's pretty amazing, all that they're doing for the field. I really also want to thank Kenneth and Oscar for helping us to understand developmentally appropriate practice for Black boys. That could not be more critical at this time. I really also think it's fitting that Highscope would sponsor this book study, because I think you all know that our field, Highscope obviously is so well-known for the Perry Preschool Project. I don't have to describe it to our viewers out there. It made such a difference. It lifted this field, not only in terms of the growth, but the recognition of the value of early childhood education. A 50-year longitudinal study that demonstrated the lasting positive effects of a high-quality preschool program with home visiting and had family engagement from the very beginning, how it changed the life trajectories of those children. What not everyone knows or remembers is that all the children in the Perry Preschool Study were African-American. And I've thought for many, many years that all of the growth of our field is owed to those children and families. And so it's even more disturbing that racially marginalized children, like those very children, are the ones who are most likely to be expelled or suspended from preschool. When those programs, they're being denied access to the programs that they themselves demonstrated the benefit of. So that's something for us to really think about. And that's why it's critically important that we're having, that this work is being done now, and it's being lifted up in this way. And I think another thing people don't recognize or don't remember is that the two pre-teachers from the Perry Preschool Project were Lisa, I mean Louise German Sparks, who is the original author of Anti-Bias Curriculum, and Evelyn Moore, who is a founder and longtime president, was a longtime president of the National Black Child Development Institute. So obviously, anti-bias, culturally-relevant educational practices at the heart of Highscope's work, going all the way back to the beginning. It's really fitting that we're having this conversation today, because as most of you know, last week, NEYC, as most people call it now, I still call it NEYC, actually released the fourth revised edition of their position statement on developmentally appropriate practice. It's been 10 years since the last one. And actually, it's been 35 years since the first one, which is a little bit scary to me when I think about the fact that I was writing it at that point in time. Couldn't possibly be 35 years. But each time it has been revised, that has occurred because our knowledge base has changed significantly and because the current issues that are confronting the field have also changed. And it's important that those challenges be addressed based on what we know, what we know now, or what we know at that moment in time from research in the study of children and families and the input of children, the input of practitioners and educators themselves as well. So luckily or fortunately, at the very same time that NEYC was revising developmentally appropriate practice, they were also writing their position, their new position on advancing equity. And so the strength of the new statement is that it aligns so closely with the advancing equity statement. And I really encourage you to go to their website and to read both of these statements, because they are absolutely, they are really a step forward for the field in a way that is absolutely essential. And it reflects, I think, so much of what Tanya was just saying. The way they're talking about it, and if you can go to the descriptions that they write and the people who talk about it, Barbara Willer, my good friend, wrote it. They say in one sentence, "Everything is new and nothing is new." And I think it's really important for people to sort of get their heads around what it means. to sort of get their heads around what it means to have everything be new and nothing be new. What's, everything that's new about it has to do with what Tanya just said about the fact that there is a deep recognition and a deep statement about the fact that everything, all of human existence in fact, occurs in and is influenced by the social, historical, and cultural context. And that's exactly what the statement is saying. And interestingly enough, what is not new about it is that it remains to be, it remains an intentional decision-making process. What is developmentally appropriate? People have, I've been involved in this for 35 years. And my biggest frustration in my entire professional life has been how oversimplified and misinterpreted developmentally appropriate practice has been. In 1997, we emphasized that it was an intentional decision process. The teachers really needed to know, not just current research, but they needed to know that children, individual children, and they needed to know the social and cultural context of those children, that the decisions they made about them had to consider all three of those considerations, those facts, and that that knowledge base. And yet, in the intervening two decades, people ignored those two, I mean, they may have paid some attention to the individuality of children, but they totally essentially ignored the concept of the social and cultural context. And they very simplistically assumed that developmentally appropriate practice meant ages and stages, the way that Tanya just described it. And in fact, someone, I heard a professor say to me, not even a year ago, that developmentally appropriate practice was ages and stages, which really discouraged me. So what the new document is saying very clearly is that, just as Tanya said, the current knowledge base has to be has to be broader. We have, there are no simple universals of development and learning because it's all influenced by the cultural context and the linguistic context. I also want to add that. These things are integrated. So and the same is true with individual individuality. We've focused on elements of that, but the new developmentally appropriate practice statement totally emphasizes that we need to focus on the strengths of children, strength-based practice, and that we need to think of children's differences, not as deficits, when we talk about their individual variation, and that's a critical aspect of it. And then, of course, when we get to the notion of taking into consideration the social, cultural, and historical context, it's not just of the children and families, but it's the educators themselves. Again, going back to what Tanya said about the fact that we all bring a cultural context and we bring our biases that have to be examined. And that, and the program as well, because the program exists within a context. So all of that is part of NEYC's new statement. And it begins by saying, "All children deserve equitable learning opportunities." The point about the current research, I think we really have to stress. And the folks who wrote this book are people who really are doing this research. Yoma Igurka, for example, recently published a study about storytelling, African-American children's storytelling capacities, which are very extensive. It's from their experiences in their homes and communities. And she learned, or she revealed in a study with 6,000 children that their storytelling in preschool predicted their literacy abilities in kindergarten. And it was only for African-American children. This is the kind of research that can influence our practice in ways that can really make a difference for those children because it is based on their culture and it's culturally relevant practice. If we engage in those culturally relevant practices, children will do better. Programs will be more effective for those children. And that's what developmentally appropriate practice should be. If it's not effective, that's my timer. If it's not, if it's, my time is up, obviously. If it's not effective for children, then it's not developmentally appropriate by definition. And I think that that's what, why we need to embrace culturally relevant anti-bias curriculum because it's much more likely to be effective for racially marginalized children. And when it's effective for those children, there's an opportunity for it to be effective for all children. I also really want to stress one more time the need to focus on strengths because children bring funds of knowledge from their families and communities. And those funds of knowledge are what you need to build on in order for children to learn, in order for our programs to be effective. Children learn based on what they already know. We have to build on prior knowledge. That's how learning works. And that learning is acquired in the home and community. And if we don't recognize it, we can't build on it. So all of what's being said, both in NEYC's new position statement, but definitely in Don't Look Away, is a way for us to move the field. But most important is a way for us to provide effective early education for every child in this country, equitable early childhood education.
Thank you, Sue. I know that I have read NEYC's new statement and I was I was blown away by the amount of changes that they've made in there, which are great changes, for sure. And I know that Yoma was also a part of that work. So I'm glad that they have some of the some of the people that have been doing this work for, out there in the trenches, to be a part of that. One of the things that you talked about was focusing on children's strength, which is a part of the Highscope approach, right? And so when we focus on children's strengths, they're more, they're going to, they're, I just can't even explain it enough how when you when you focus on children and you are there with them and you are talking with them and you are, you're interested in what they're doing and you're focusing on what's interesting to them, the amount of conversations, the amount of language, the amount of things that they're going to tell you is absolutely phenomenal. So as a teacher, that's one of the things that I always make sure, and as a trainer, I make sure that I tell my participants that, you know, we focus on the children's strengths, not their deficits, but we want to focus on their strengths. So thank you so much for addressing all of those things as well. Tanya, I want to turn it back over to you to, I know that you have some other points that you want to make also.
So this is the slide of my daughter. Her name is Zoe Aday. And we are, my husband and I are really big history and and names, you know, people. We believe that you enact your name and it's very important to know your history and very important to know from who you come from, right? And so my daughter's four. Her name means life. Zoe means life. Aday means royal. And so, and my name is Tanya, so my name means praiseworthy. My husband is Frederick, peaceful ruler. We named our son, our firstborn son, also after him, peaceful ruler. And then our latest son, Isaiah Amir, beloved of God, and had some prince. So we're all royal. And it's also not followed upon us as well that for Zoe, one of the things that I explained to her since she was very little, really in the womb, is that she comes from a line of maternal women that we've been the first in everything that we have accomplished to do. And so I share with her her legacy of excellence from which she comes from because my great-great-grandmother was a first in, you know, in being the chef, you know, integrating the chef in her community. And then my grandmother was the first in integrating the housekeeping, you know, supervision in our local hospital. My mother was the first in being the first African-American woman to integrate the business sector of the hospital. I was the first African-American to get tenure at a predominantly white institution. And so I share with Zoe that she is in a long, long, long trajectory of first in her family. So all she knows is to be excellent. All she knows is to be absolutely phenomenal. This is a narrative that's counter to what we know historically and currently society tells us of who she is and what she should be, that Black is not beautiful, that Black is dangerous, Black is violent, Black is aggressive, Black is angry, Black has five, you know, children by five different men before they're 20. That is the perception, that's the narrative in which society, the media, even cartoons, you know, provide of this little girl whose whose name means royal life and whose ancestry is of excellence. And so I start off with this slide because in our book, we have very specific scenarios about, well, where do we begin with equity? Where do we begin with anti-bias? Well, the first step in being equitable, the first step in anti-bias education is to first look around and see if there's any opportunities for children to express who they are unapologetically and the beauty that they all bring. So that's the first step. And then what type of language are we using to describe children as well? Do we know their stories? Zoe knows her story. Do you know the stories of excellence? Sue just just talked to us about, you know, this funds of knowledge. So do you know the stories of excellence that children bring with them? Again, all Zoe knows is to take charge and to be a leader. But what we know from statistics and what we know from leadership, from from literature and from research is that instead of knowing that her her sense of 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 leadership, her boldness, her unapologetically Zoiness, instead of using that as an asset, she would be suspended. She would be ostracized and she would be referred as having a behavior disorder. And so again, we have to really think about how we are creating these constructs and creating these environments that's not conducive for children. So I was walking into, Zoe is a part of an amazing early childhood program, very high-quality, amazing, very culturally responsive. And so when I walk into, this is then her three-year-old classroom, these two portraits were, one is of her friend and the other one is hers. And so her friend is the one that says, "I'm Black and my mama said I'm wonderful." And I was so excited, you know, to see this, particularly because I knew the family, I knew their intentionality and affirming their daughters like I did. My daughter says, you know, "I love to make silly faces with my mouth, etc." And so as you'll see the skin tones, you know, and the hair and the perception of children, give them the resources, give them the the options and the opportunities to have these discussions. And we talk about this in the book. We talk about providing not only materials, but environmental resources, but also conversations and to to be responsive to children when they are, when they do project biases or prejudices or any curiosity that they may bring. And so, of course, being an equity scholar, I was very intrigued by the skin tones and the variations of skin tones. And so I asked the teacher, "Well, did they only have, you know, a very dark paper and a very light paper? Or did they have various color variations?" Because that's a part of what you have to intentionally talk to children about, that we have various different, you know, skin tones and different types of hair and different types of, you know, facial features as well. And that's what makes us really unique and beautiful and diverse. And so the teacher said, "Oh, yes, this is what they chose." Both my daughter, as you see, she's a honey brown, and her friend is my complexion, so a very light-skinned brown, Black girl. And so I found it very intriguing. And this is what we know also from research is that children sometimes have these really binary views, you know, of of race. So they are identifying their racial construct as Black, you know, as being brown. And this is representative of their brownness, even though it doesn't match their actual skin tone. And they had opportunities to match. They had different, you know, colors that more so matched their skin tones. This is showing, with this picture here, it was showing their variation of of a positive, developing a positive racial identity. And so I started off with that slide because I wanted you to see how we have to provide children with opportunities to explicitly be able to connect with who they are and from where they are to go. So what can we do? I talked a little bit about this already earlier with Kenneth. And so I just want to highlight a few other ones. This is my other son. So this is my two-year-old that my husband and I were going back and forth because he wanted him to know the ABCs. And I'm like, "Oh, brother." You know, we called him Trey because he's the third. Like, "Oh, my goodness, Trey is far beyond the ABCs, you know? That's just so age-old thing of you have to know your ABCs." But we have to, you know, think of it within a different cultural context. One of the things I wanted to highlight is as a Black mother and a Black scholar, like many other, I'm sure, parents that may be on the call, we try to protect our children. My son really likes Paw Patrol, so he's not going to get a drop of rain on him. And so a part of when we send our children out into this world, we want to make sure that they are equipped with being happy, healthy, and whole. And it is my my wish that as I send him and his siblings out into the early childhood spaces, that they are not spaces of what we call in the book, spiritual killers, right? We are very fortunate, he's very fortunate to have, to be in a household where we have multiple literacies in which we expose him to. I'm an educator myself, so the academics, we got this covered. But to send him into spaces that don't see him as a remarkable, brilliant, exceptional child could have devastating results to his identity, his positive self-esteem. And so I want you to really think about in your own spaces how you can create experiences for children that are not only high-quality, but also speak to their positive racial identity, the strengths that they bring with them. And a part of anti-bias and culturally relevant teaching that we talk about, we provide many examples about this in the book, is we have to do what's called decolonizing. A lot of the 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 teaching practices that we do. An example of that, and we have to start critically thinking about even the nursery rhymes. So like, why are we still singing? Have you listened to the lyrics of Rockabye Baby? Like, why are we singing that song? What about Ring Around the Rosie? Do we know the history of that song? And what we're actually saying when we're singing that? And then with these games that we play that do teach, you know, important concepts, like Simon says, how is that being biased towards men, alright? Or biased really towards women? So we have to really deconstruct and think about critically some of these, even the nursery rhymes that we use, how they're not, they're culturally subtractive and they actually really are not helping to teach in a culturally relevant and anti-bias manner.
Tanya, thank you so much. Oscar, I know that your background and research is on Black boys. I would also like to hear your reflections on Don't Look Away also. Thank you for joining us.
Well, you're very welcome. I'm happy to be with you. So I've been charged to do two things, right? To offer at least a little reflection on the book and then to share some of my own insights from my own work. And I guess the first place that I that I would start is that I think the book is wonderful. I enjoy reading it. And like Tanya's personal presentation, the book has this rather uplifting focus, it's very positive and not blaming. And so I think it's it's a book that everyone, Black, White, Brown, can get into. And my own sense is that it, that the personality of the authors sort of came through. It was energetic, compelling in its details. And I really, I really liked the main thrust of it. And I would say that it marks an important turning point. And a turning point is this. In the year 2001, our federal government passed the law, No Child Left Behind. And as some commentators, it made a real miscalculation. It assumed that if you have high standards and accountability and test a lot, that you would be able that you would be able to reduce the educational disparities that exist, uh, between black and brown. So, my, my own sense is that when that law was passed, I knew, I could predict that fifteen years down the line, when they were predicting they would eliminate ra, um, racial disparities and that it would be a failure. And indeed, my predictive powers, my prophetic powers, unfortunately, were accurate. And I wonder if in early childhood, we are, uh, the larger field is at a similar point, in the sense that, uh, we are, we put a lot of energy into coming up with evidence-based curriculum. And we feel that if we have teachers who are well-trained in literacy and numeracy, that that's it. That will solve the problem. And if that is the case, and it may not be, uh, then I think we're in for the same kind of disappointment. Uh, that to the extent that we ignore the kinds of cultural issues, the anti-bias issues that, um, that were raised in this book, I think we're destined for the same kind of disappointment in terms of achieving better outcomes for our children. Uh, and so, I think that, uh, that to that extent, I think, uh, the book is really good at talking about, uh, the kinds of roles of social forces in Joe, uh, and the kinds of things that teachers need to take into consideration. And in my own experience, a, as a clinical psychologist, I have to admit, uh, that I was brought into the area of early childhood by, uh, Head Start programs that were really concerned about behavioral challenges around the increase of mental health issues. And so, a lot of my early focus was on that. And I know, so these are not something, these are not issues to be poo-pooed, swept under the rug. But at the same time, we need to understand the larger context out of which many of those issues arise. And I think the, um, the most important thing is that if we take into account the kinds of things that the book has tried to emphasize, of getting to know children, sort of immersing selves in the child, their world, the world, the issues, the events, the celebrations, the music, the areas of excellence, um, that, that is an important step. And another important step is self-knowledge on the part of teachers. Um, now, when I, I've spent many wonderful hours in early childhood classrooms in Mississippi, in Maryland, um, in Louisiana, um, in Illinois. And I sat there and I felt it was a privilege to try to understand what was happening. Um, what were the concerns of teachers? Why were they, um, experiencing difficulties? And why was it that so many boys were being expelled, suspended from school? And why was it that teachers had a tough time looking at, uh, the positive things that boys bring? And in that experience, I, I just picked up a couple of things. Uh, one is that indeed, the teachers were, there were one or two boy typically in each class when, uh, and when I've done assessments of, uh, largest districts, that there are always maybe one, maybe two, uh, boys that stand out, um, because they're having a particular problem adjusting to the classroom. And some kind of call them the symptom bearers, that they're the symptom bearers, because they're bringing into class, they come in struggling sometimes, having difficulties with routines, managing their emotions, uh, fitting into the classroom. And they stand out and unfortunately, the one thing that happens is that teachers then characterize all African-American boys. And let me assure you that in my observations, it was, um, most, most of the boys are really doing fine. Um, but for these particular boys who are the symptom bearers, teachers reported uneasiness and kind of relieved when they didn't come to class. And it's almost that they felt that the solution was, well, if you just take them out of the class, things will be better. We will, you know, my class will be wonderful. And what I have found is when the administrators exceeded to the teachers' wishes to transfer the students or sometimes even worse, to suspend them, uh, that something interesting happened. Even though those boys were gone, there are others who rose up to take their place. Uh, so that, uh, that the teachers often were in not much better shape. And so, it occurred to me that we really need to think about, what are the things that we can equip teachers to do in order to manage those who come, the few that, the symptom bearers? And it seems like the first thing, uh, is that's consistent with the book, to learn about the world of the child, to understand that the child's struggles, uh, are not necessarily, uh, things that are inherent in the child, but they represent things the child is struggling with. And that the key, again, as the book points out, the key is the relationship. And that often what boys need is someone who can understand, who's willing to take the time to be present with them, to avoid simply blaming and punishing, but to help, but to understand, uh, what their struggles are about. And in order for that to happen, the teacher has to step out himself or herself to be empathic. And I call that the empathic shift. They have to shift from seeing this boy or these sets of boys as problems in and of themselves, to a, a position of emotional empathy with them and seeing their role as trying to understand, trying to be with them, to be present with them, rather than simply trying to correct them all the time. And that can happen in a number of different ways. Uh, but I would say that the most important way is extending themselves to get to know, uh, young boys, to get to know perhaps their families. And the key will be that if at the end, by the end of that school year, the boy emerges from the class believing that she got me, he got me, that there was someone, an adult, who knew me, who understood me, uh, my full self. And so, what I'd like to in there to say that this requires really a lot of self-reflection on the part of teachers, but also, um, a need to understand sort of the emerging child and what they need. And sometimes, it's mostly an empathic adult. So, I'll stop there.
Oscar, thank you so much. Uh, every time I hear you talk, I just, I hang on every word that you say, so thank you so much. Uh, I'm going to turn it back over to Jana now. She'll do the final wrap-up.
Thank you, Kenneth, and thank you so much, Tanya, Oscar and Sue. I've learned a lot today, I must say. There were some questions and we did start our, uh, our, at our beginnings with the idea, um, that this is an ongoing series. Uh, many of you have posted some really wonderful comments. I do want you to know that we have collected questions and, uh, we know we're not going to be able to get to those today. However, we're going to be meeting on a monthly basis right up into April. In April, there is no programming as yet. And so, we will collect, um, your many comments and questions and, uh, hopefully, you will join us during that April session. One of the questions actually addressed, um, uh, diverse language learners. Uh, I actually have always balked against the acronym English Language Learners, because every infant and toddler is an English language learner if they're not learning another language, right? So, I love that one of our participants in the audience today remarked on, um, DLLs being diverse language learners. They might be learning multiple languages in addition, uh, to English. Uh, here in our, uh, national setting, we have some international visitors with us as well. Um, so, I, I know that Katie and Ingrid are kind of pushing some things out. Our next session, uh, this, this session will be recorded. Our next session, um, will be around, um, uh, language justice and, uh, diverse language learners. Uh, December sixteenth at, uh, two o'clock Eastern. Um, all of these sessions have been recorded and, um, you will be receiving a certificate of participation. I know that some of you have posted, um, that query. And I hope, um, to gather with you in about a month's time. Please spread the news around. Um, go back and listen to the previous recordings on our, uh, the Highscope, um, roundtable and in the playground, and we'll go from there.